The Planning Commissioner meeting of May 8, 2024 will come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda? Oh, sorry. The secretary will call roll. Commissioner Tolson?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Mayor?
Here.
Chairperson Men? Now. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All second?
A motion was made by Commissioner Tolson with a second by Commissioner Rice. Unless there is any objections, the agenda stands approved. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes?
All second?
A motion was made by Commissioner Rice with a second by Commissioner Kennedy. Unless there is any other objections, the minutes are approved. The secretary will read the declaration of conflict. If any member of the planning commissions may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Are there any declarations of conflict? This is the time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard? Hearing done. Is there any correspondence from the Deputy Director City Planner?
Yes, Vice Chair Mayor and members of the Planning Commission. We have supplemental correspondence regarding item 11A1. That was provided to you here at the dais and provided to you via email. And the copy of that is available to the public outside on the desk. Item nine, there's no items for item nine.
There is no items for item nine, which is the consent calendar. Now we will move to new business. This is the time and place set for a public hearing of the consideration of CS 2022-0005, SP-S-2023-0002, and PD-S-2022-0015 thereof. Are there any expertise communication to report? May I have an oral report of this matter by staff?
Yes, good evening, Vice Chair, Mayor, members of the Planning Commission. Yes, tonight is a development application to construct a 66-unit multifamily residential apartment complex at 1575 Arringer Road. Our senior planner, Elizabeth Richardson, is here for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we will be reviewing a request for a zone change, specific plan amendment, and plan development permit for the construction of a new multifamily residential building.
Hang on, let's pull up the screen.
Thank you. The project consists of a zone change, specific plan amendment, and plan development permit. The zone change will change the zone of the 0.19-acre city-owned property from commercial office to residential very high density. The specific plan amendment will remove the city-owned property from the Arroyo Semin Greenway specific plan. And the plan development permit is for a new 66-unit multifamily residential building. An affordable housing agreement is necessary for the five affordable units set aside for low and very low-income qualified renters and the request for concession and waivers. The affordable housing agreement will be considered by the city council. The project is located on Arringer Road, near the intersection of Arringer and Haywood Street. Surrounding uses include commercial office building to the north, the Churchill Apartment Project to the west, Arringer Road and condominiums beyond to the east, and the Arroyo Semin to the south. The site is generally vacant with some remaining driveway and asphalt from the previous development that has since been demolished. The total project area is 4.76 acres. Previously, the 91-unit Churchill Apartment Project was approved on the 3.11-acre portion of the site, shown on this exhibit in yellow. The Ridge Apartment Project we are reviewing tonight is on a 1.46-acre portion shown in green, and the 0.19-acre city-owned property is shown on the exhibit in red. In the future, a lot line adjustment will be required to create two legal lots in order for the Ridge Apartments to be constructed. This is a view of the existing site as viewed from Arringer Road looking west. The project site is split zoned into residential very high density and commercial office. The primary parcel is zoned residential very high density, while the 0.19-acre site, which is circled here in red, is currently zoned commercial office. The 4.57-acre property was identified in the Housing Elements Site Inventory as an opportunity site for infill development that would accommodate lower-income household units and was rezoned to residential very high density in 2021. The purpose of the zone change of the city-owned property to residential very high density is to make the entire project site residentially zoned to accommodate the new apartment complex. The city-owned property is located within the boundaries of the Arroyo Semin Greenway specific plan. The site is currently undeveloped, but designated as a rest area along the trail with benches, trash cans, and low-rock walls. Removing the proposed rest area will not significantly alter the trail at this location. And the Rancho Semin Recreation and Park District is in concurrence that the rest area improvements in this location are not necessarily not necessary and can be removed from the specific plan. And up there on the screen, the exhibit to the right is what was envisioned for the rest area. The project site will be developed with a new 66-unit apartment building. The building will be four stories and approximately 89,612 square feet in size. The units will be a mix of one and two bedrooms, which will range between 800 and 1,255 square feet. Five of the units will be affordable at the low- and very-low-income categories. 73 parking spaces will be provided as both surface parking and garage parking. And amenities will include a hot tub, outdoor kitchen, dog park, bocce ball court, media room, community room, fitness center, workspaces, and common areas. The site is designed with the building in the middle and parking on all four sides. Parking on the eastern edge of the building will be for visitors to the project site, including delivery drop-offs and guests. Parking on the northwest and south sides of the building will be for residents. And an interior courtyard space provides open space for the residents and includes amenities such as the hot tub and outdoor kitchen and dining area. The building is designed as a modern contemporary architectural design with stucco and fiber cement composite siding, flat roofs, metal awnings, vinyl windows, and metal railings. The building massing is modulated with horizontal and vertical articulation by varying the parapet heights and furring out portions of the walls above the first floor. Two large balconies and a projecting main building entrance further enhance the east elevation facing Arringer. The building is rectangular in shape with units facing out on all four sides. Parking is provided in first-floor garages on the north, south, and west sides of the building. And the building has a first-floor base finished in two-color stucco. The second, third, and fourth stories use a variety of materials, including stucco, fiber cement composite lap siding, and mini-V-beam metal siding. This is a front entry to the building, which is defined with the fiber cement composite siding with upper-story balconies and is accentuated with the projecting first-story building entry. The applicant is providing five affordable housing units for low- and very-low-income qualified renters. This qualifies the project for a density bonus increase, modified parking requirements, one concession, and multiple waivers, as long as the waivers do not impose a life or safety hazard. In general, denial of a concession or waiver requires findings that it would have a specific adverse impact on the health, safety, or physical environment for which there is no mitigation or that it is not required because it would not preclude construction of the project. The applicant has requested the density bonus, one concession, and five waivers. The applicant is providing five affordable housing units, which qualifies, which is a 7% of the 58-unit base density. This allows the project a density bonus increase of 25% or 15 dwelling units for a maximum of 73 dwelling units on the site. I apologize for that exhibit being saying 75. However, the applicant is only proposing 66 dwelling units, which is a 13% density bonus increase with this application. The requested concession is to increase the number of stories from three to four. Without the density bonus, a three-story building could be constructed on the site. Staff is in support of the incentive since the second to fourth-floor massing is setback 40 feet 6 inches from the property line and an additional 20 feet 6 inches from the required 20-foot base front yard setback. Additionally, the building is oriented on Arringer Road, which is a secondary arterial roadway with a wider street width, both of which make the additional story and massing appropriate for the location. The five requested waivers include increased building height, decreased front yard setback, reduced number of optional standards, increased walking distance to the trash enclosure, and increased walking distance to the parking spaces. The waivers to increase the maximum building height and reduce the front yard setback are both relevant to the building height and massing. The waiver to increase the building height will increase the height from 40 feet to 55 feet, which is shown here on the left-hand side of the diagram. The waiver to reduce a front yard setback is for the portion of the building over 15 feet in height and is reduced from 58 feet to 40 feet 6 inches. The red triangle delineates a small portion of the building that does not comply with the required front yard setback. Staff is in support of both of these waivers as the second to fourth-floor portion of the building generally meets all the required setbacks, and the building massing is oriented on Arringer Road. Arringer Road is designated as a secondary arterial roadway with a wider street width, which minimizes the building massing as viewed from the public right-of-way, which is appropriate for this location. The waiver will decrease the required number of optional standards from seven to six. Staff is in support of this waiver since the project will still provide optional standards, including being an infill project site, providing security devices such as ring doorbells, alternative roofing materials to asphalt shingles, providing recreation components, including a bocce ball court and outdoor kitchen, and having a larger one- and two-bedroom units that are over 800 square feet and 1,000 square feet. The waiver for walking distance to the trash enclosures would increase the required maximum distance of 250 feet for a resident to access the trash receptacle as measured from their individual front doors. Staff is in support of the waiver because the project will still maintain a 250-foot distance to each trash enclosure as measured from the entrances to the building. The waiver for walking distance to tenant parking spaces would reduce the maximum required distance of 200 feet from the resident's front door to the parking space. Staff is in support of the waiver since the project provides the required number of parking spaces and meets ADA accessibility requirements. And staff recommends the Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval to the city council for the zone change, specific plan amendment, and plan development permit, as well as the determination that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And this concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions of staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
I have a few questions. Kind of general questions, actually. But do we know the apartment vacancy rate in the city? In general?
It's Commissioner Rice. I'm looking at Mr. Chen. Do you have a current number, Mr. Chen? It's definitely close, probably to 1% to 2% range.
That's what I expected, but, okay. And the next one would be, how much would someone have to make to be considered low-income or very-low income? I know this comes up all the time, but I just want to bring it up again, just so that we're clear on...
We'll bring up Associate Planner Eric Chen with some of those numbers.
By Member Services, we are looking at for a household of four. You're looking at, a moment.
Sorry, if I was nicer, I could have prepped you with that question.
Pardon me. Actually, I'm going to have to come back to that one.
While Mr. Chen is looking, I'll just note that the numbers are based on regulations published by the state regarding median income for the county.
Correct. And I, but I think it's important because I know that this always comes up and people always bring it up. And I think what I'm getting at is that the number's higher than I think most people think it is.
So for average median income, the median set at household of four, at HUD standard, you're looking at 123,500 for 2023. So if you take 80% of that, that will be at the low-income level. And then 50% of that, that will be at the very-low income level. I unfortunately do not have those numbers in front of me right now. Okay, you do? Okay. So for a household, so for a standard household of four, you're looking at very-low-income household is 66,400. For a low-income household, at 80%, you're looking at 106,250.
Thank you very much. Okay. Right. And two other questions because they came up in the the notes we had on our desk that pertain to this project. At least one of them did, if that's okay. And it directly pertains to this. And I want to do this. And that has to do with the, it has to do with the imbalance of housing types. I'd like to address this now before we get into people, if that's all right. Because we've talked about this before on the dais. But specifically is that, you know, I just want clarification that, you know, it does cost the city more in the long run to have more single-family homes than it does to have. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, that people understand that in the long run, single-family homes cost the city more than apartments. For infrastructure.
Yeah, single-family is often a money loser, basically because of the infrastructure costs and the growth of those areas. It's often called a sprawl, but it's going beyond the center of the city to extend water, sewer, drainage, those. And generally, single-family is a money loser versus an infill site, which in this case is probably utilizing existing infrastructure.
Right. And what I'm getting at is that, and my point here is that essentially that we don't want to have an imbalance of too much of one type of a project and say, "We don't want to have too many single-family homes. We don't want to have too many apartments in the city either." You know? That's...
Right. The city's general plan identifies a generally an 80/20 balance, single-family, multifamily. And generally, we need to keep within that, within that range.
Correct. And currently, we have, what percentage of the city is single-family homes, approximately?
I'll have to pull that up.
Okay, well, okay, we can come back to it, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're, because this always comes up. And I just want to make sure that we, and I want to keep us on track, but...
Commissioner Rice, is that okay so that we keep that?
We can come back to it, that's fine. We can come back to it, but...
I feel like we all have opinions about that.
No, and I'm okay with that. But, you know, in the public testimony, this always comes up. And I just want to make sure that people understand that this, we're going to come back to this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions to the staff?
That's all I have for now.
Is the developer going to be presenting anything or not? Okay, I can wait, I can wait.
Yeah, I'm going to wait, too. We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Oh, thank you. Oh, that's the applicant. Can you please fill out the card? You can speak right now if you can state your name and residence. Sorry? Oh, applicant needs to speak first, I'm so sorry. Can I please call Mr. Adrian Stern?
Elizabeth, do you have a clicker or are you going to? Okay. If I say next slide? Okay. Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to see you again. My name is Adrian Stern. I'm here as the applicant's representative. I'm the managing partner of the development that we're talking about tonight. I have with us in the audience our architect, Scott Gavner, and some of my other partners and investors in the project. So we're here to help you go ahead and understand what we're trying to accomplish here. Next slide, please. So this is actually our fourth project now in the city. We started here approximately seven years ago. And we started our work on the Patricia Corridor, starting with the 1196 project, then moving to the 1260 Patricia Project. We think both of these projects have been an amazing success. Commissioner, you asked about the vacancy rate. Our vacancy rate is zero. Not only is it zero, but we have a fairly extensive waiting list for our apartments. And other people we talked to in the city are in the same position. When we came here originally, we did a lot of groundwork. We believe in the idea that instead of giving a product and hoping people will come, that we were going to come ask the people what they wanted. And the message that we heard is that we, as residents of the city, are entitled to high-quality housing. We don't want to leave our city. We don't want to go to Warner Center. We don't want to go to Ochsardt. We want to be here. And so when we set out to build these projects with our architect, Scott, we said to him, "Look, we want Class A project. We want something that we would all be comfortable in living in. We want large windows." You can see how unusually large the windows are from an apartment building. We want the ability to... We want the ability to have green space and open space so that people can enjoy that usage on the buildings. We felt that nobody wanted to share a washing machine and a dryer, everyone kind of a yuck, we want our own, so we built space. We didn't put balconies in, and originally, when we came to the city, people said, well, why? I said, well, it's pretty simple, we want to put more space in the units. We want to have that space more visible, more usable. From a practical standpoint as a developer, I know if I put a balcony out there, people will put stuff on it, eventually it'll become unsightly, eventually the balcony will leak. So we took the position with the architect, no, put more space into the unit. Our units are probably larger than most of the units in the city. So we had a general feeling of what we wanted to accomplish. We have committed with this project before you today, almost $100 million of construction in the city, which is a tremendous amount of money. We so far have gone ahead and just in permit fees alone, we are going to pay the city over $4 million. We pay property taxes so far of $875,000, and we have created many, many jobs during the construction process, and those people need places to eat, and they need places to shop, and they need places to go, and so during that process, if you walked in to try to get a pastrami sandwich down the street from our project at lunch, you had to wait 20 minutes because there were so many construction guys lined up to eat there. So we consider this to be a very successful project. Next one, please. The Churchill Apartments were just about ready to break ground, we're just finishing up some work involved with that. The Churchill project is designed to have a lot of green, open space, a lot of kind of more open area, very large, comfortable units, very approachable from a standpoint of just a lot of green space, kind of suburban feel. Well, next one, please. The new property, however, we wanted something different. We could have built a single project on this, but we felt the density would be so high that it just wouldn't be a comfortable place to come home to. So instead, we decided that we would do something different. We would have kind of this more suburban feel on the first project, and then the second project, the one on Arranger Road, would be kind of more of a city-type project, little bit more dense, a little bit of that kind of hipper, more intense feeling that you see in a lot of projects that we're seeing going on in the Warner Center area right now. And so from our standpoint, we felt the projects would be complementary in that certain things would appeal to certain groups of people. The commonality between all the projects is the size of the units and the spaciousness that you feel because of the window sizes that we're involved with it. Next slide, please. You know, we could have gone ahead and done something kind of plain and kind of boring, but we really wanted something that enticed people to come into the building. The whole idea, when I sat down and I talked to Scott about it, is I want you to come to the building, and I want you to feel drawn into the building. And I think he did a great job involving that, both with the two wings coming out and then the balcony area above it. There's a natural draw into the building, and if you're driving down the street, you're going to see that part of it. Next slide, please. The other thing that we wanted to do is we understood that this is a big building, okay? We're not going to lie, it's a four-story building, we're aware of that, but the idea was to try to minimize it. And the reason why we want to try to minimize it is nobody wants to drive by this big hulking building. And so what we tried to do is shadows, we've done colors, we've done undulations with the building, we heavily landscaped the front of the building, and we put it facing the busy street, not the other side where we could have, the residential side, we tried to stay to the commercial side of the property. So we feel it's the best compromise we can reach as far as the size of the building. Next slide, please. I think we can duplicate it, next one. Like I said, this is some of the stuff we've done so far with it, so we can probably skip past that. This is a study we had done, we haven't updated it yet, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, you want to talk about commissioner efficiency, apartment living done properly can be very efficient. We were at a community meeting, oh, I think about three or four years ago, and one of the members of the community said, you know, it really bothers me, you're taking up a lot of water. And I said, look at it this way, we are building a residence for 50 apartments, we're going to house maybe 80 or 90 people, we have one swimming pool. If you go ahead and you build your house, 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 you're going to have 50 or 60 swimming pools. And I said, what do you want? What do you want? You want efficiency, you want ability to go ahead and have habitability? We can deliver that for you. Our buildings are so energy-efficient that in the middle of summer, the middle of summer, on the ground floor, people don't even run the air conditioning half the time, because the bulk of the building does the process of keeping the people cool, and the buildings are highly insulated and highly protected from the environments in those areas. So we can be super-efficient by doing this. We can provide first-class housing experiences for individuals, we can do that in an efficient way that goes ahead and it benefits the city, both from a housing stock standpoint and from a quality of life standpoint. Next one. You know, 3.4% is the rate, but the only reason why the vacancy rate is 3.4% is that there's just product that's been pulled out of service that needs to be repaired. Like I said, our vacancy rates are zero, we don't have anything. And the other problem that we're facing, which has impacted our existing tenant population, is that people who we would not expect be with us for long periods of time, because traditionally, they would be the first home buyers, they can't afford to today because of the interest rates. They're locked, you know, they have no choice. My daughter, you know, is getting married and she has a nice townhouse, and she, we were talking the other day, she said, Dad, I want to buy a house. I said, you can't do it, Vay, it makes no sense, you have a 3% mortgage now, you're going to be getting a 7% mortgage, how are you going to afford it? So our populations are much more stable than we ever thought they would be. Frankly, as a landlord, you kind of like a lot of turnover, right? Because that gives us the ability to see higher rent returns. We're not seeing that on the buildings, but, you know, we're okay with that because we feel the stability is really worthwhile. Next slide. Simi Valley suffers from old housing, and if you don't believe me, go drive around someday and take a look at the status of some of the housing we have in the city. You know, there was a big bump in housing that was built, and then it kind of died off. Why? Because it became very expensive to go ahead and build. The cost per door, how much has gone up since the last building? 20% since we were here last time, 20% more to build the exact same apartment. So obviously, it's going to be more difficult to deliver housing in the future, which is not a good thing for both your city or anybody else. Next one. The other thing that we, I hate that, you like that word millennial, I hate the word millennial, you know, it should be a better word, but let's face it, the problem that traditionally communities like this have is that when people are younger, they start out here, we have great educational systems, we have a good quality of life, they go off the school, and they don't come back, because traditionally, the reason why they didn't come back is there just wasn't anything here for them, you know? And since we got involved with you guys seven, eight years ago now, we've seen changes in the city. We've seen improvement in activities for young adults, we've seen the ability now to generate nice, quality housing, you know? We have residents who say to me, look, you know, I don't mind driving over to wherever, I can afford to live here, I can have the lifestyle I want here, there are things for me to do here, the restaurants have gotten better, you know, COVID kicked the heck out of all of us, but at the end of the day, this is becoming a more livable city in many respects, and so we target primarily that age group. You know, we don't appeal to seniors, although we take them as they come, we don't appeal to younger people because they want an environment that's even different than what we can offer, but we can give you an environment that really works for most people. Next slide. Let's get past this stuff. You know, things that we give people are important to them that maybe not important to us at our age, well, my age, I don't know about your age, but like, when you step on our property, you have free Wi-Fi. Why? Because everybody walks around with their phone in their hand, right? All of our residents are walking around with their phones, and in addition to that, they want to have certain things. They want charging stations for their electric car, well, we've got that. They want a place to hang out and do their emails, so we have theaters in our buildings so they can watch movies together in a communal way. We have state-of-the-art gyms so that you don't have to belong to a separate gym, you can go work out. Our gyms are so good, I work out in our gym sometimes. Next page. Conference rooms, conference spaces are important. Everybody who lives in our buildings thinks they belong on Top Chef, they want nice appliances, we give them that. We have the washer dryer to avoid the yuck factor, dedicated area for ride-sharing because a lot of younger people today are much more involved with ride-sharing than I ever was. So you provide those amenities. Next page. You know, we worry about things like solar power, you know, it's becoming a big issue for us in buildings. Smart locks, nobody wants to carry a key anymore. Everybody in our buildings walks up to the door and their phone triggers off the door lock. Why is that important? Because, you know, if you're somebody coming home and you got your purse over your shoulder, you got two bags of groceries, you don't have to fumble for your key, just put your purse near the door, door pops open. If you're out of town and you want to let a friend into your apartment, you can send them a one-time code, the door will open. And if it's not you, the door lock actually takes a picture of the person who's come in, so you know who actually accessed your apartment. So we have those abilities. Next. Here's the unit mix. The unit mix is an argument that we have as partners all the time, because Simi Valley is different. So often, in our buildings and other places, all everybody wants are two-bedroom apartments, two-bedroom apartments, it's a big seller, and experience has showed us it's not here the same way. Your population, for whatever reason, wants one-bedroom apartments. So we cater to that by mixing the unit quantities a little bit different, but if you take a look at the size of the units, and if you're familiar with a lot of apartments, you know, we have two-bedroom units that are over 1,000 square feet. Why? Because again, we've taken the outside space and brought it into the unit. So the unit mix, I think, caters to the population that we're interested in. Next slide, please. I think that's about it. I think that's about it, right, Elizabeth, that's it for slides? Yeah. So in general terms, we are thrilled to be here, we enjoy working with you, we argue vigorously, politely with staff, and we come to an agreement on what works for all of us. We think the process is very collaborative, we believe in the city, we've invested a lot of our time and money in the city, and thank gosh, you are not Los Angeles. That's all I can say from a developer's standpoint. So that's our presentation for the evening. Thank you for the time, I appreciate if you're listening. We'll answer any questions.
Are there any questions for? Thank you, Mr. Stern, are there any questions for the applicants from the planning commissioners?
I've got a couple. Can you confirm that there's going to be no parking on Arranger on the east side of your property?
On Arranger itself, Commissioner? Absolutely none, it's a death trap. I, right now, when we pull in, that little driveway, and I got to pull it out again, I cross my fingers. We have more than adequate guest parking, we will not have any parking in Arranger.
You've got some gates, are those going to be like keypad or something like that?
The gates for the parking, people, we get a transponder for their car, so the secure parking is behind the gates, but in front of the gates is unsecured parking for the guest parking that we have.
And Lyft and Uber and all that? Perfect.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
How are the parking spaces being assigned?
The, typically, we have a common pool of parking spaces, so if the resident chooses to go ahead and rent a parking spot from us, those are specifically assigned, otherwise we use a pool parking concept. We actually probably have maybe six or seven more parking spots than we actually need in the secure area, and so we have not had a problem in any of the other buildings as far as getting adequate parking. That's not been an issue with any of the buildings, Commissioner.
So there's no additional cost to get a parking space?
No, the pool parking is pool parking.
Do you maybe know the average price for a one-bedroom or two-bedroom unit?
Do we have a pricing model yet?
Yeah, go ahead, tell her. So one bedroom right now is around, there's a range, and it kind of changes, 2,200 to 2,400, and the twos right now are between 2,500 and 2,900.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Commissioner, thank you, thank you all for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to be heard on this matter? I have one speaker. Can I call Adrian Stuck?
Good evening, my name is Adrian Stuck, I am a homeowner here in Simi, I've lived here for 30 years, I'm also a small business owner, and my business is in the building at 1633 Arranger, right adjacent to this property. So I wanted to speak tonight a little bit, you know, that two-story building, so the developments between my building and the Arroyo. I wanted to speak to you a little bit because I drive that Haywood-Arranger intersection every single workday, and I'm so familiar with the traffic on that street, and I was so surprised when he said that it's a death trap on Arranger, and it's very scary, there are a lot of people walking on Arranger, there are dogs along the Arroyo, along Arranger, kids from Arroyo are walking home, kids from the elementary school are crossing Haywood, there is a crossing guard during most of those school hours, but I'm very worried about the amount of traffic that this project will generate, because Arranger is such a busy street, and we've all seen how so many people are running yellows and red lights now, more and more, it's very unsafe. I see it all the time at that controlled walking, that controlled pedestrian area from the Arroyo to cross Arranger. People press the button to cross on their bikes or their dogs or whatever, and people still keep running that, and it's very scary to me. I'm worried about how much traffic this project will generate onto Arranger, because I'm telling you, I drive that every single workday, and Haywood as well, and when their other project goes up Churchill, that's even going to dump even more traffic onto Arranger. So that's even another danger to this particular area. Also, I wanted to just have a pause a moment about all these four-story buildings going up. I know you know that's a concern for our city. It blocks the views of our beautiful hills, it's changing the nature of our city when you can't see our beautiful hills from all these four stories. I know you have a lot to balance, you have to provide housing, you have to provide affordable housing, I understand that, and I think this location is a really good place to develop. I would rather have this developed than building on our beautiful hills, but I'm concerned about the size, the scale, the scope of this building on that property. He admitted, it's a really big building, it's going to block a lot of views, it's not really conducive to the Arroyo Greenway right there, which is very busy, and it's very beautiful because the park is right there, as you all know, and so people are accessing the park, they're accessing the Greenway, it's busy all the time, and it's wonderful, the Greenway is wonderful, but this building right next to the Greenway is going to really degrade the goals and the function of the Greenway right there. I'm also concerned about just the fact that this has so few affordable housing units. For 66 units, they're only going to provide four, and that's going to help all those folks in our town who, like he said, can't even afford to buy their first home, they're forced to rent. How is this going to help solve that problem? I would really ask you to consider bringing it down to two stories. Like I said, I'm not really opposed to having a development there, but I would like it so it didn't block the views of our lovely hills, and it didn't generate quite as much traffic onto Arranger or even Haywood down the line. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard? Yes, if you can fill out the card later on and state your name and residence.
They didn't have it out front when I came in. Okay, my name is Steve Kapp, and I am a resident in Simi Valley for 60-some years, and I know this area very well, and I think it's probably well-suited for the type of development they're going to be doing. However, I do not believe the design of this building is conducive to this area. It does not match any of the residences, any of the condos that are in that specific area. This is really conducive to downtown LA, it's really conducive, as he mentioned, Warner Center, but it is not conducive to Simi Valley. We have a really appalling-looking structure up here on Alamo that's gone in, we got an appalling-looking structure up here on Cochran, where these buildings are being put right on the street without any setbacks, but the design of the buildings are really very static. I mean, it really could be an army barracks, not a residential structure suited for Simi Valley. I mean, we recently had condos, apartments built over there on Sycamore that are well-designed. that are well-designed, well-suited. It's, you know, kind of a Spanish-style architecture. And that's what's suitable for Simi Valley, not something like this. I love the amenities that they have going into this building. It's very nice. But one of the other things about this structure is being built right on the Arroyo and overlooking the park. And it would seem that those residents, you know every single resident that's going to go into that, one of those units that are looking south, out over the park, is going to say, why in the world am I sitting here not being able to go out onto a balcony to appreciate the beauty of this unique area of Simi Valley? That should be required. You want to take off a few feet off of that side of the building? Fine, take off a few feet. But give the people that live there, particularly for those rents, that is not cheap rents. And if you look at our guides for Ventura County, the rents that they're talking about right now exceed what the rents are showing right now for in Simi Valley, for what they're going through for. So, they're looking to make a profit on this thing. If they're going to do that, leastways, let's encourage them to design a building that's conducive for the community and that has the amenities that the people deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, can you please?
The green cards are right over here.
Is there anybody else who would like to be heard? Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Bob Cottle, and I've been a longtime resident here in the city. Just, I'm not here to speak either for or against the project. More or less, just some clarifying comments. If you'll bear with me. First of all, a number of very low versus low-income units. It would be nice if we knew how many are low and how many are very low, and if there are any two-bedrooms or if they're all one-bedrooms. Be kind of nice to know, and you probably should know that before you make a recommendation. Just so you know, the clarification for very low is fifty percent median, which was stated earlier. The income limit for low is sixty percent median, not eighty. And probably not likely you're going to get four people in a one-bedroom. I hope not. Two kids in the living room, I don't know where they're going to be or with the parents in the bedroom. Anyway, so the income limits are probably going to bear out something a little bit different than what was discussed earlier. That would probably be, become more apparent if we had the Affordable Housing Agreement attached to the report. I didn't see it. Maybe it was there, or maybe it was just inadvertently left off. But Condition 17 of the Stafford Report refers to the attached Affordable Housing Agreement approved therewith. Firstly, I don't believe that the Planning Commission has the authority to approve an Affordable Housing Agreement prior to the review of the agreement by the Affordable Housing Subcommittee and is approved by the City Council. And in fact, in A16, it does state that the Affordable Housing Agreement is approved by the City Council. So, maybe just some wordsmithing to clarify, what is the intent of the conditions might be appropriate? Let's see. Oh. And aside, Commissioner Rice asked this question earlier. I thought it was kind of interesting. A long time ago, probably thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago, maybe even forty, I was working with the city of Simi Valley. We had a fiscal impact analysis that was provided for larger developments. Now, this isn't really a large one. But in any event, the conclusion was that the higher-density apartments, or not apartments, but multifamily units yielded a higher cost to the city to maintain than a single-family. That's not to say that we don't want multifamily in the home, in the city. We need all types of housing. But I can assure you that fifty affordable, fifty apartment units, the amount of income to the city vis-à-vis property tax, sales tax revenue, is much lower than it is for fifty single-family homes. Because they're going to be valued at many times what apartment, one single apartment unit would be valued at. So, just to clarify that, I'm not speaking against multifamily or a single-family. But I'm just saying, just so you know, that there is a cost to multifamily. And it's higher police services, more police calls statistically. There's lower revenue, because they don't have as much money as people in a single-family home that buy an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar home. They can go out and spend more money in the city. So, that is it. If you have any questions? That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to be heard? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Doug Robertson. My family's been in Simi Valley for a hundred and four years. I love this town. I work for the city, I work for sanitation. I haven't heard anything about what we think that might do down there. I see it every day coming in. It's going to be a big influx of stuff like that. My only concern with low-income apartments is I would just wish we could have different options. Maybe some sixteen-unit apartments, where there's multiple buildings on one site, where there's lots of greenery for the kids to play. That would be my only concern. I think we do need more apartments in Simi Valley, but I just don't think we need that style. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you please? Thank you.
I haven't finished. Good evening. To the Commissioners, please excuse my dress. I did not expect to speak here tonight. No disrespect to y'all. I do not know this project well. I do know a project that was mentioned earlier, the project at the corner of the Tappo and Alamo. The project I pass every day. And it is a monstrosity. It is far out of proportion for the neighborhood, for the community. As I understand it, this Commissioner, its predecessors, disapproved it three times in a row. It was forced upon the city, basically blackmailed by Sacramento. That's a very dangerous precedent. And with all respect to the architect, when I saw the depictions of this building, it reminded me of something called the Borg Cube. I don't know if anyone here is a fan of Star Trek: The Second Generation, but the most destructive, dangerous ship in the universe was the Borg Cube. Ten thousand by ten thousand by ten thousand. Nothing could stop it. Nothing could defeat it. It careened through outer space, crushing planets, stars, solar systems. And if I could, if you remember anything from my statement, two words. Proportions matter. Proportions matter. Whether you're setting your table for dinner or planting a garden, proportions matter. And these monstrosities are way out of proportion for Simi Valley. And I presume that the staff has done the research on its effect on education, water usage, police, traffic, and so forth. But the developer talked condescendingly about the old housing. I honor, I celebrate the traditional housing, the traditional families. Up there near the monstrosity of Tappo and Alamo, we have relatives. We visit those neighborhoods. My wife and I live off of Yosemite. But those are single-family houses, ranch houses, Spanish colonial revival, colonial revival houses, in proportion for the city. And then to have, to me, I sometimes refer to that building at Alamo and Tappo as the USS Gerald Ford, the largest destructive warship in the world. I am a Navy veteran. I celebrate the Navy, I celebrate our ships. I celebrate the USS Gerald Ford. But it should be in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, not at the corner of Alamo and Tappo. So, for the local residents that are concerned about having a Gerald Ford in their neighborhood, I'm with them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anybody wish to be heard? Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Yes, Vice Chair Mayor. The first response is into Commissioner Rice's question about the percentage of housing from single-family, multifamily, and per the city's housing element, the single-family ratio is anywhere from seventy-two to eighty percent. And when I say that, it's because it splits up single-family attached versus single-family detached. So, there's really a finite definition of what that is. But roughly seventy-two to eighty percent is single-family, and the rest are multifamily and mobile homes of that nature.
Well, I know it's kind of hard, especially with ADUs and stuff getting thrown into that mix, correct? Did they get added into that as well?
I don't think that's in that reference as far as ADUs.
Okay, all right.
The other, other comments about the use, this, the, in staff's opinion, Arranger Road is a location for this type of project, as identified by our general planning and housing element. It's on the valley floor, it's a residential high, residential very high zoning designation where multifamily structures are supposed to be built away from the hillsides, away from single-family neighborhoods. So, this is a, we believe, hits, checks, checks those boxes in terms of sites where a type of project like this could be, could be constructed upon. As far as the process goes, we worked with the applicant since late 2022, I believe. So, it's been well over a year, a year and a half. We have gone through our design considerations. The applicant is entitled to present their design to the Planning Commission, and we've, we've worked hard to make improvements to the, to original design. So, we're in favor of the design, but obviously, design is the eye of the beholder. You know, we have asked for certain enhancements, such as balconies and whatnot. And part of the situation, you can ask the developer this, is it costs money to build affordable housing. So, they've, we've asked for it, and they say they can't meet this requirement. So, we, we try to make do with what they provide. The five affordable units, that's the, above the minimum requirement for affordable housing. Part of that has to do with the city-owned property, which the agreement going forward to City Council, they would provide two additional affordable units with that transfer to city property to this development. And going back to the site itself, this is a site identified under Housing Element as a, essentially, I don't want to say required housing location, but there, it falls under the Housing Accountability Act, which means that if it complies with all objective standards and no health and safety concerns are addressed, that a project must move forward to some extent. What I'm saying by that is if this project doesn't move forward, someone else could come in and do the same thing. It could be a more, a bigger project. Put it that way. And last thing, my last thing is the large amount of one-bedroom units in the site could be an advantage because of smaller unit size with the same density could create a smaller building. If a developer proposed three and four-bedroom units, the same building could be five stories or larger, bulkier. So, this is probably more compact than other projects may be considered. And I'll look at my staff. Were there any other comments?
No, I believe you had everything, Sean.
Okay.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Anything else needed to be added other than the fact that we believe that this is the most efficient type of product that we could put on the site? We agree with Director Gibson. We thought about it long and hard. You know, we could have legally put more units out here, but we didn't want to overburden the site. The buildings we brought to you previously have been that way, too. We don't put to the maximum, we put to the ones that we think are the most efficient. So, that's what we'd like to add.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? Commissioner Rice?
Sorry. I may have misunderstood this, but it was either the applicant or staff, and this goes along with what Mr. Gibson said, I think, is I understood it if, well, we can't deny the four-story because of the affordable component, but if this was a three-story project, the mass would be bigger because they could expand it out farther and actually put more, more units on the lot. Wasn't that correct? Did I mishear? So, they could make it three-story, but make the mass bigger?
I believe because they have two lots combined. Maybe I'm wrong.
Was that? Did I mishear that?
Well, I'll try to.
Because, because as I understood it, they could actually, because they're going for sixty-six, but couldn't they actually have seventy-three on the project if they maxed out what they're allowed to do? Is that correct?
With those affordable units they're proposing, they qualify for density bonuses and concessions. And with what staff's presentation, a building could be designed at three stories. It may involve completely tucked-under parking with less uncovered parking and be underneath the building. They may ask for additional reduced setbacks, which would be a different factor.
Yeah. And then it would be even, it could end up being even closer to the street, and it would be even tougher for us to, I don't know.
Right.
Okay, that's.
There's lots of ways to get to design a building.
Right. That's, okay, that was, okay, so I didn't under, I didn't hear that correctly, okay. If it's okay with you, could I ask a question of Mr. Chen? Traffic engineer? Or, who is, I'm sorry. Oh, my God, the traffic engineer. I'm sorry.
Justin.
Justin. Mr. Link. Correct? I'm all mixed up today. Okay. It has to do with the crosswalk.
Good evening, Commissioners. Justin Malink, City Traffic Engineer.
Sorry. I got my people all mixed up.
It's been a while.
It's been a while. I haven't seen you in so long.
Several years.
Okay. It's about the crosswalk, because it was brought up by the kind lady there who works in the business north of this project. Is that just a normal crosswalk? I mean, it's, as I recall, I was just there, and I can't, in my mind, it's just a regular crosswalk. It doesn't have, like, any sort of fancy striping or anything like that?
I believe the northern side, the northern leg of the intersection, does have what we call a ladder crosswalk, because that is a.
It is a ladder crosswalk.
It is a ladder crosswalk.
It's pictured right there?
Because it has a crossing guard stationed.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
We did a project a few years back where we did ladder crosswalks at the crossings where crossing guards were stationed.
Have we considered doing anything more than that? I mean, if, if these two projects get built, you know, that's what, a hundred and, what is that, a hundred and fifty-seven more units, something between the two projects, give or take? And, you know, other projects down the, down the street there that get built in time? Has the city considered, you know, improving that crosswalk even more, like putting, you know, lights in the street or something? So, when people push the button or anything like that, is that something that's in the works?
Nothing in the works? Nothing in the works, doesn't mean that there couldn't be any changes in the future. So if there is higher usage at this location, we could provide enhancements. We generally wouldn't pair certain treatments with a signalized crossing the way it is now. But we could add more time to the crossing, we could add, or change the paint or the striping-
Yeah.
-to enhance it, but certainly, it's something to be considered in the future.
Okay, or is that something that we do based on, you know, the number of accidents or things like that?
It's based on demand, based on collision history.
Accident, okay. That's, that was my concern. I just wanted to, since she brought it up, I just wanted to make sure that we address that issue, because I thought that was a good question.
Certainly.
So I thank you for, oh, and the last thing was, has to do with level of service. So the level of service on that street would be, with this project, with both of these projects, the level of service on the street would be, I know it's in the book, but-
I, I believe they're still operating at an acceptable level of service in Los Angeles, and Arranger operates at level of service B during the PMP hour, but there is minimal changes as a result.
Okay. And that would be approximately a level B, just for people who don't understand what level B is. If you could just-
Level B is, in technical terms, the 60% of the intersection's capacity. So anything 50% or less would be level of service A, level of service B would be 50 to 60%. So in this case, it is 62% of the total capacity.
Right, so it's not as bad as Madera and-
Cochran.
Correct, yeah, which are horrible. Okay, so, not great, but, okay.
Was there any other mitigating actions or concerns taken about ingress and egress to this property, like negotiating a turn area in, or anything along those lines?
Nothing in particular that stood out during the process, or at least the DAC process and looking at the plans. The project isn't specifically conditioned, but as part of the design process, they are required to have a certain distance on-site where vehicles may queue, so that they do not queue off-site. So there shouldn't be vehicles sticking out into Arranger while they're turning or waiting for the gate to open, and that's at both driveways. This street does actually have a two-way left turn lane, so vehicles exiting have the ability to make a two-stage turn, so they can enter the center turn lane rather than cutting across all lanes of traffic. And the southerly driveway is restricted to right in, right out. So the project has been conditioned to install a raised median to prevent vehicles from interacting with the Arroyo Simi crossing. So we didn't want anybody making a left turn out in that area where cars may be stopped, or pedestrians may be crossing, or making a right turn, or, excuse me, making a right turn and doing something strange, making a U-turn, that kind of situation.
That does sound like mitigating efforts.
Correct.
What about the speed limit in this area? Any consideration with the increased traffic flow, especially with the Arroyo Simi crossing there?
Not at this time. We have not done a reassessment of our speed limits in some time. We're coming due on those, so we will conduct speed surveys across the city to reassess and see where those fall, and based on the new laws that have come in, to see if proximity to the, the park would allow us to take a reduction in the speed limit, but at the moment, no.
I ride down there with my grandchildren, and that's always, crossing there is sometimes difficult. Thank you.
Couple of questions for me. You say that there's a media, a center lane that you can pull into, to turn into the property. Is there a chance that, heading north, that the backup could be into the crosswalk of the Arroyo?
No, so that was another purpose for installing that raised median, is to prevent that queue from extending into the crosswalk. So I don't, maybe there's-
It's going to be installed, I mean, it can't be installed here, so this left turn will only allow that.
Thank you. And then when the traffic studies were done, the traffic study for the Churchill Apartments was independent of this project-
Correct.
And this project was independent of the Churchill project?
Correct.
Is there any kind of traffic study with, combined?
The way we account for both projects is within our cumulative analysis. So when we look at the general plan build-out, that considers both projects. So the general plan looks at the highest and best use of each lot and the amount of trips that could be generated based on the development. And actually, in that case, for Churchill, because this is developing less than the number of units that are allowed on this site, there would be more traffic assumed for the Churchill than there was for this property. So if the Churchill had developed more units than, or less, fewer units than what was allowed to develop based on what the general plan designation was, then it would be a similar situation. But in this case, it would assume that, that the highest and best use, so it's a worst-case analysis.
And the Churchill property is leading on to Haywood. This project is on to Arranger.
Yes.
Have some more que, more questions? Mr. Cottrell was asking about the housing agreement. Do we have a housing agreement in place? Okay, yeah.
Commissioner, Commissioner Tolson, the affordable housing agreement is in process. The, to clarify, the conditions are approval are designed for the city council ultimate approval of the project. So the affordable housing agreement will be going to the city council, and I believe it is, it may be going to the subcommittee, Mr. Chen? So we're looking at a May 30 potential subcommittee meeting for the, this project.
Can we also clarify on the percentage of income for low-income versus very-low? We had mentioned earlier 80%, and he mentioned 60%.
Commissioner Tolson, yes, according to HUD standard, it should be at 60% of AMI for lower-income standard, and then the remaining will be remaining four. So there, there will be one unit at that, and the remaining four will be designated at very low at 50% of AMI.
Thank you very much. And then Adrian was concerned, she wasn't sure about the number of units for low and very-low, is five for this project?
Combined is five.
That's right, thank you.
And the bedroom mix on the-
So, so this will not be designated by bedroom mixes. However, it's going to be designated by household size. So it will be the qualified household size. Say, for example, if a household coming in, say there's a family of four, then they will potentially qualify for a two-bedroom unit as opposed to one, and that's more of an incentive for the residents.
Thank you.
Is there a maximum number of people per household to qualify to live?
HUD standard's basically looking at two per, two people per bedroom, not counting children.
So we are basically confronted by mandates to have two. Closer, okay, yeah, sure. And it is a common misconception that once we have an affordable unit, or any kind of an affordable unit, that the city council and, and commission have a lot of say in it. I'm, I'm saying this because we know that, but maybe somebody in the audience doesn't know that. So once there is an affordable unit, the state law virtually guarantees its approval, leaving us very vulnerable to severe repercussions if we object. Is that correct? I'm saying this because Neighborhood Council III had a lot of concerns, and they denied the project, and I feel like we should address that in our discussion, too.
Is that a comment or a question?
It's, it's a question for you, if, if my statement is correct.
Okay, so the application is subject to state law in terms of the affordable units. If they propose a affordable unit, they are entitled to a density bonus and concessions or waivers. So that's correct, and any residential project is also subject to the Housing Accountability Act for residentially zoned projects. The site is a site identified in our housing element as a site that should be used to help achieve our arena, arena goals, and units are designated in our housing element to achieve those. If they're not used here, they will have to be reallocated somewhere else in the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Gibson. I have a couple of my concerns, and we can discuss that if you guys, if, if want to. Oh, did I not? Are there any comments or questions from members of the planning commission?
If you want to just give, you have questions or comments, or just?
That's what it says in my key sheet. I did close the public hearing.
Right, I think we're on the discussion and deliberation section of the, the public hearing.
Okay.
So, which would not preclude, if questions do come up of staff, you know, they can still be asked.
Commissioner Kennedy? No? I do have a couple of concerns. To me, I, I understand that Commissioner Rice mentioned multifamily versus single-family homes. I, I agree with you on the mixture, and I have nothing against it. I do have a concern that this is not a path to homeownership. I do, I strongly believe that, that we should have a path to homeownership. This is my belief. And I strongly believe that this is what Simi stands for, from what I'm hearing from the residents. Obviously, I'm not hearing from every single one of them. I do have a parking concern in that area. I do not believe that anybody has 1.5 cars. And I understand that there is a history that I don't, I'm not aware of, that people might have one car per family. This is not my experience, and this is not based, I, I don't have any statistical knowledge, but from what I see and from the people I know, and most, some of them live in apartments, they do not have one car per family, or 1.5. And I do, I do acknowledge the aesthetics. I, I personally like that style. It's modern, it's something that, that I, I personally like. However, my belief is that we already have one building that is right next door, that is a four-story building. I would be open to discuss something that is a three-story building, maybe, if that's even a possibility. But two four-story buildings right next to each other, to me, it doesn't belong there or in Simi. And despite the risk of challenging state mandates, I believe that long-term, we must prioritize well-being and prosperity of Simi. And there comes a time when we must stand by our convictions, which is what I'm doing right now, and our deep-seated love for our city, rather than yield to the fear of potential consequences. So this is my stand, and we can discuss. Okay, with that being said, may I please have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number ZSVPC 04-2024. A resolution recommending that the city council approve zone change Z-S-2022-0005. A specific plan amendment SP-S-2023-0002, and plan development permit PD-S-2022-0015 in order to construct a new 66-unit, four-story, multifamily residential building located at 1575 Arranger Road, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt.
If you want to clarify, on page 16, the motion wording on number 14. Page 16, item 14.
There you go. I move to adopt a resolution recommended to the city council approval of Z-S-2022-005,
A motion was made by Commissioner Kennedy. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
A second was made by Commissioner Rice. The motion passes. There is no appeal period for the zone change specific plan amendment or plan development permit, and the item will proceed to the city council with the planning commissioner's Does staff have anything to report?
Yes, Vice Chair Mayor. The upcoming planning commission meeting will be on May 22, and I did reach out to each commissioner individually of a potential for special meeting on July 24. We have confirmed that, in the affirmative, that that meeting will be held. So if you want to, please mark your calendar for that. We have a public hearing on that evening. So thank, thank you for your consideration.
Do any commissioners have anything to report? Does staff have anything to report on the mobile home rent mediation board?
None tonight.
Does staff have anything to report to, to the tree advisory, for the tree advisory board?
No items tonight, thank you.
This concludes the meeting of May 8, 2024. The next scheduled meeting will be May 22, 2024. This meeting is adjourned.